Shepherd Matthews, Freetown.
Deborah Petty, Town Administrator, Freetown.
Lance, who's the executive assistant at Freetown.
All right, well, we have a full complement, which is lovely. I know it took a little bit of work since November to try to coordinate, you know, a convenient time for everybody and one that would align us to with our new fiscal year. So I guess what we'll do is we'll just stay right to the agenda. So the first discussion is reviewing possible amendments to our regional agreement. I know this was something that had come from Freetown. So I'm going to turn it over to you for this part of the discussion and just enlighten us to what are these possible amendments that you're looking to address?
Yeah, I don't know, if you'd like to speak to this.
Sure. So thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak with the Lakeville Select Board as a joint meeting. So like we discussed, originally when we looked at the district agreement, we sent it over to the school committee and to our superintendent. And the general conversation was, hey, it's 14 years old. Let's dust it off. Let's see whether this be amended or changed or updated. Right? I think over the month since we've started that conversation, I think there are, you know, from different folks and that want to add things to it. But I think to keep it as simple as possible is to review it between both towns. Make sure, one, it still falls in line with what our both-town charges are. And again, dust it off. It's 14 years old. And typically, any select board is, you have a contract that's worth three to five years that you're able to sign. It's good to keep some nice fresh eyes on it. All new faces on both boards. Why not take a look at this as well? And I know it was supported by the superintendent at the time. Again, dust it off. It's not like we're sitting there trying to pick out one person or another person. It's not about that. It's about, it's 14 years old. Just take a look at it.
Okay. And did your board happen to take a chance to look at it? Do you know what the school committee took a look at it?
Well, that's the start, right? So by speaking with KP Law and our attorneys and everything else, there are certain ways that we go about this, right? One, we work with the school committee, which I encourage. That's why the whole point of it is to work with the school committee and make sure that they're okay with the language as is or change what's needed. Then it goes to both towns. And that's where the joint communication started with Lakeville and Freetown. You can't do this alone, right? We had added into one of our warrant articles, in the event, we had this meeting earlier in the year. Of course, our schedules are like yours, but we're all pretty out there sometimes, right? So that's the steps of amending if any changes are so warranted, right? So the steps are, we speak with the school committee, get their buy-in, maybe create a group that all talk about what's on the, any specific language that wants to be amended. Right? I know the lawyers want to look at it and make sure nothing's changed legally as far as MGLs and things like that. So it's very, very loud conversation in a sense. But at the same time, it's, again, I'll rephrase, it's 14 years old. Let's just take a look at it and see what makes sense.
Yes. So I remember, like, trying to remember what the specific item was that was... So I know we talked about having a warrant. We ended up not doing it because obviously that was, procedurally, wasn't the right thing to do. I don't really, can't really remember exactly what the sticking point was or any specifics.
At that time, we were talking about wanting more financial information from the district. And then, so procedurally, to open up this, the district agreement. But we had discussion at great length of that we might not need to do that. And just so you know, we did, the goal was to meet with Lakeville, kind of come up with what the two boards were looking for, and then go with the school committee and include them in the conversation. If it is, in fact, financial information, it may be something that the towns can agree directly with the school committee to get on a regular basis as opposed to necessarily amending the district agreement. So I think that's where we left it. We were looking at, maybe we could get monthly financial statements from the school.
A more timely budget, I think, would help everybody.
And one of the other talking points was the hiring committee for the superintendent, which actually would come into play again at this point with that, because this does have a higher... So it was, it was not necessarily to change the language in here, but to possibly supplement it. But this first step would be Freetown and Lakeville agreeing, and then going, taking those agreements, going to the school committee and having those conversations to see what they were willing to agree to or not agree to. Because maybe it's not something that necessarily the agreement needs to be amended, but that maybe you just have a supplement agreement. Yeah, they agree to give you monthly financial statements. Maybe they agree to allow members of the town to be included in the hiring committee of the superintendent. There's, as far as hiring, I think there is probably an MGL that I did not review before tonight's meeting that needs to be reviewed before anything is really simplified.
Because it sounds to me, you know, that this is, you know, more of like an administrative type request. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that you and Andrew are, have regular, or will have regular meetings with the business department at the school?
Yeah, we've had one together so far. And Jack has kind of committed to giving us a monthly budget report. It hasn't quite happened yet because he's in the middle of kind of chaos, you know, as an acting. But yeah, I think we can definitely share that with the boards.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. I mean, I've never not known them to be amendable to something, you know, just like getting a monthly budget, you know, update. I know it does go out to the school committee every month.
And Chair, as Town Administrator in Lakeville, we got it every other month was kind of our cadence. And Ashley, at the time, used to share it with us every other month just as a course of business when we would meet at the regional school committee. That's when we would, it would be shared out with the group.
And where you said 14 years, I mean, it's a long time when you, when you really think about it. And we haven't had any amendments to it. I guess, you know, starting today, we can agree, or not agree, that if we were to look and see if there was any possible updates that needed to occur, that it would be a joint discussion with Freetown, Lakeville, and the regional school committee. Because I feel like we're all vested, you know, in this document. And when it was created, we were all at the table. I mean, I just remember being at the intermediate school around, you know, the bowl. And it called them, but we're everyone together, which I think was really beneficial. So we all, you know, had agreed that it wasn't going to be the word "shall", and it was going to be the word "will" or vice versa, so to speak. But, I mean, at least that's something that I would like to entertain.
I would hope that all three parties would be involved with it. When we're going to make changes to it, that everyone that had, you know, something to do with it should be involved. It shouldn't be just us. And I don't think that tonight's meeting was ever about trying to, you know, open it up, look at it, make changes, close it back up, not including a third party, if you will. So I think that I 100% agree with you that everyone should be involved. That, especially the school committee, when you're talking about something that's such as the school, you know, that agreement.
And I think as well as, like you said earlier, keeping everybody together. You know, I think the parents may also have some things they want to add or change or even just be included in the conversation. So again, it's a little older. Even if we just, a win is just changing the dates and putting new signatures on it. That's a win, right? But at the end of the day, let's take a look at it and hold harley as a team and see what makes sense.
Okay.
You know, something's been there that may be tightened up, others need to be rewritten. Who knows?
Okay. Lakeville, do you have anything you'd like to add?
So I know that all parties have always come together in the spirit of teamwork. So there was no instruction book for the pandemic. And the schools came to us and said, "We need all these Chromebooks." And, you know, "Can you use your CARES money?" And we did, right? There was never any, "We don't want to do that," you know. So I think everybody sitting, you know, probably in this room, not just at these tables, knows that it's really important that we get it right for the kids. But like, the pandemic and, you know, I'm the first one to say I don't want to keep blaming the pandemic for everything. But it was nice to see that we all made sure we were doing things in collaboration. But it also shed the light on maybe how we can change things. I mean, as a select board, we're looking at our own internal policies. So I think it would be a great idea, you know, just like we've looked at, you know, other things, the way we needed a new facilities person because we had one person doing three jobs, you know. So you're under constant, that's part of what it is to do our job. So I think it would be great for, you know, all three parties to sit down. I do believe your signature's on it, so you were at the table. Because that's one thing that I always look at, you know, how did it, how did it get to where it was? How was it when it was approved? Has it stood the test of time? To Carlos's point, has Mass General law changed? Because we know there's been a couple of big changes, the 2017 changes. And so I really would like to see, to see this agreement looked at again. And I do believe all stakeholders need to be sitting at the table. But I do also believe it's our job as leaders of both towns to make the first step, so.
So maybe our town administrators can, you know, collaborate on a, you know, on a good time. Because I know, you know, budget cycle is here and, you know, town meetings in June. So, you know, maybe it's a summer project on a Saturday. Just throwing that out. Just throwing that out there.
Something to look forward to.
Brian, Maureen, did you have anything?
Um, do you guys... Okay. Mine is maybe more of a question. I have a problem that all of us voted to do an audit and they decided not to. And I would like something in the agreement that that can't happen. I don't think that's appropriate.
Clarification?
Yeah?
Are you looking for a audit cycle or is this a one-time audit? Are we talking about, like, a nice...
You guys know way more about that aspect of it than I do.
No, I was just thinking, like, you know, every 10 years you do a full audit of, you know, your services. It's just good hygiene type of stuff.
What kind of audit were you looking for?
So everyone uses the word and it's not, it's, they say it's a fraud audit. It's not, that's not how I'm looking at it. This is just an audit of all things. An audit to ensure that good practices of being adhered to, that everything is where it's supposed to be, all the accounts are in order, everything is as it should be. You know, the yearly audits that we have, they do a great job at what they're tasked to do. But they're really just there to say, "You said this is A. I verify this is A." That's not looking for anomalies and problems. I believe it's good hygiene, and I would suggest it for our own towns as well, that every 10 years we have a full soup-to-nuts audit. And whenever there is an irregularity, that triggers another set of audits. And maybe we come up with a threshold. We say, you know, if you have a regularity of $500,000, that's an automatic trigger of an audit. Something that takes kind of the political posturing, like, out of it. And it's just a good practice. That would be my suggestion.
I like, yeah, that's good. So that makes a lot of sense. Like, we, Brian and I, both on the Regional School Finance Committee, this came, the audit came up for, we were specifically talking about audit of the finance for the schools, right? And that, yeah, I think scope is something we were struggling with, right? Like, in understanding where we want to specifically go with it. And like, I was thinking it through the lens of like a forensic audit, right? Which I think might have been, maybe different when you just described, right? It's, what I'm, I think we're looking like, if there's specific things that we see that we want to dig into, but we don't know what those things really are yet. So I kind of like the way you articulated that where it's more of a holistic kind of approach. I was thinking too, the actual, the yearly audit we get where there's failures for different kind of controls and processes and procedures, like, those can be focal points of this type of audit, right? I think one can inform the other. But, I mean, if those services, you know, where it's not your normal audit that you need to do, right? It's something over and above that. I mean, I'm sure companies provide those for, you know, school systems, so.
They certainly do.
Yeah, so I mean, that, that seems to make a lot of sense. Yeah, I like the idea too of having it like every five or 10 years, depending on cost, right? If it's extremely expensive, that'd be important. But then also, I like the idea of a trigger. Like, where we had some serious budget issues, right? Where, like, what was going on? And that could be a great way to take out any kind of finger pointing and trigger stuff like that.
And you don't know what you don't know.
Exactly.
So a lot of these times you think that, you know, this is the issue, but that's not really the issue. That was the result of this issue over there. So, yeah.
Yeah, Brian? At the risk of getting too far off the agenda, I just want to clarify something. So I can't speak for Freetown Select Board, but our select board voted a recommendation of an audit. And we didn't even know what term to use, fiscal, forensic or otherwise. That recommendation was passed back to the school committee. The school committee then delegated that task of defining the scope to the regional finance committee. It wasn't that they didn't do it. It was scope had to be defined. That task came to us. We then determined that the best course of action at the time, because we all admitted, we also don't exactly know what scope to include here, was to delegate kind of an advisory committee to certain members. And that went off and was supposed to happen. And then soon after, there was turnover, Regional FinCom lost his chair. We just finally got one back at our last meeting. So there's, there's been a lot of dead space. It is something that should be revisited, since at least I know our town showed an interest. I apologize. I don't know if we took a vote on it or not.
I think we did.
But it wasn't that the school committee said, "We're not going to do it." There's just been a lot of activity, as I think we're all aware. And we need to just revisit it.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I think if it's written into an agreement, like the way select board member can...
That check at the end.
Just like Maureen said, I think that there wouldn't, it wouldn't get lost.
Yeah, it becomes procedure. It becomes, this is what we do. And it doesn't have to be a football. It doesn't have to be, like, people's feelings are hurt because they think everything's being mismanaged or anything. It's not that. It's good hygiene. It's good housekeeping. It's something companies do. It's something we should hold ourselves to. And, you know, we should hold others to.
It's not lost in a other committee that's appointed and this and that.
How long would something like that take?
That's a good question.
Months, years?
No, not years, but I could probably reach out.
I can tell you the yearly one that Jack's going through, even that's months for low-level one, or high-level, I guess I should say. So a deeper level one probably could be a year, depending on what the scope is.
It depends, yeah. Very dependent on the scope.
My comment came from the fact that I thought we were voting on that with the intention of getting it done before this budget cycle so we would know what we're going into it with. And that's where that came from.
That's a good point. It's a very good point.
Defining the scope, but there was a lot. So that's where that was coming from.
Gotcha.
If I may, I did have one comment on the actual agreement itself, which was, as the Lakeville folks know, our town clerk's office went through a significant effort to get all of our bylaws recodified, get all the MGL references, figure out which ones have been superseded numerous times.
E-code.
Yeah, and it's on the E-code site now. I mean, I would love to see something similar done because finding this and reading it is, like it says, 14 years old. It's atrocious.
I think we did that, I think we did that through a community cabinet grant. So if we could find out if we can apply a community cabinet grant as, you know, in tandem and apply it to the region, that would be...
We're also codifying, doing that, same kind of...
Yes.
Yeah.
What's the company we're using?
I don't know the name of the company.
But the codification of our website.
But it's, yeah, and, yeah, as we know.
It was like two years.
Because the same thing, what you're talking about, where we had this one MGL that was, you know, surpassed by this one, but we were still referencing this one and it was hard for people to find things.
Conflicting things we found?
Yep.
You'll love it when it's done.
Yeah, exactly.
The codification process, it does take a while, but it's needed in time to time. We've done the same thing with internal policies within town. This one was just one of the oldest ones we had in the books that, again, just need a revisit, so.
How old is our recycling policy? Leah probably knows, the one that took from the 90s.
Must-use donkey.
And just finished our policies, right?
We finished the recodification of the existing bylaws. Now they're doing the review of them to see if they're, if they're in compliance with them, the current laws and all of that. So we're sort of in the middle of the second phase of that.
And also our internal policies and procedures. So we just went through all those and updated them. Fun stuff. Reading those sometimes, you know, most exciting content, but important stuff.
Madam Chair, I had a question. Are any of us going to be suggesting things that we would like to see tonight or are we waiting on that?
I mean, I guess I envision it more till when we're in the room. So if you can kind of think about and jot them down in your little black books and, you know, bring them all to the table because...
And with all three parts, yes, ma'am.
Right, yep.
So I should have mentioned this on the top meeting. I forgot. I know we do have another, we have a course-like meeting after this.
Oh, okay.
At 7:00 PM. So it's 5:53. We have plenty of time.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
For that. Thank you.
All right. So I guess we'll, we'll just work on, you know, scheduling a time where we can all come together and, you know, just at least, you know, take a look and start from there.
Sounds great.
Yeah, because procedurally, this is, this is how the attorneys told us, so this is how it goes. And let's just do it the right way.
Okay.
Talk with together.
All right. So any concerns surrounding Asalwam sit in long ponds? So I think this also came to the table for discussion.
What was the ethos of this agenda?
I think it's just that we always have a lot of activity in the summertime, plus at the boat ramp on our, at our Freetown side. The boat ramp's very active and we expend a lot of time and resources in the summer months. And also, of course, we, both towns, I know we get the calls about the pond levels frequently and what we're doing about them. And there's really not a lot we can do about them, but I thought it was a good topic because we both towns deal consistently with both subjects. We, I think Freetown deals with the boat ramp, but I think Lakeville deals a lot with the pond, activity on the pond. So it's just, it's just something that both towns have concerns with.
Yeah, I guess, Chief Prost, this, this year, this past summer, was it as bad with incidents as it was previously, the previous year? Because I remember you had all kinds of situations.
I want to say that the activity at the boat ramp has progressively increased over the years to the point where we're restricting parking at the boat ramp because it's full and people that are attending the location, they're scrambling to find other locations to get access to the water, but also park their private vehicles and their trailers. This increase in activity, of course, brings in other activity that we don't want to deal with, but we have to, okay? Whether it's criminal activity or even people getting injured or whatever types of services that we need to respond to at that location. We do the best that we can to handle the situation. Over the years, we've hired additional officers just specifically to monitor at the boat ramp location. We, our department has relied on enforcement being done by the environmental police as well as the Lakeville Police Department that has a, I don't want to speak on behalf of Chief Perkins, but a marine unit that does enforcement on the waterway. And our department has actually requested mutual aid at times for the need of that boat to assist us because we don't have a marine unit at this time. But I foresee in the future, in the support of a marine unit, to be able to work alongside of the Lakeville Police Department. And it's very involved. Having the personnel to be able to support the program is key. Having the finances to support the staffing and training and equipment, all comes into play. But my biggest challenge is not to offset our normal streets patrol. But we, to this day, we've been, be committed to work alongside of our neighboring agencies, Lakeville, as well as supporting the state agencies of state police and environmental police regarding the activity on the pond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah. Question for the board, maybe for the chief. A few years ago, we were trying to get a wash station there to wash off the milfoil to ensure that we were not adding extra invasive species in the water. I didn't know if that has been looked at for the last four years or so. It was one of those things that even though we can treat it, it's better to not have it be introduced as opposed to, you know, dealing with it after.
We spoke with a couple of different people from state level about doing that. And they say, to your point, that that's the only way. You know, there's been some groups that have been proactive about getting out there and trying to eradicate the weed from the pond. But as much as they eradicate it, if someone continues to bring it back. So we have had some conversations in around it.
We have had multiple meetings with Serpent and Doug Cameron from the state and the representatives. So I think Representative Orwell and Rep. Schmig, we had a meeting out at the boat ramp. The conclusion was that they felt like there was no really space there for a boat wash because you need, I think you need hot water. It wasn't going to work. What they suggested, which I'm gonna, I wanted to say anyways, that the best-run boat ramps are run by a community, people that, that benefit from the boat ramp. So what has been suggested to us is if we could get a group of people that live on the pond that are interested and invested in the pond and the boat ramp to, like, work at the boat ramp, that's, that's the best thing. They said the best approach is to have visual on the boats as they're coming in, making sure this milfoil weed is not on them. So I'm not sure. I know there's, there's a lot of groups, the Asalwam sit pond group is involved. I know Freetown does the hiring for the boat ramp. But if there is Lakeville people that live on the pond that are invested in the pond and invested in the boat ramp that are, you know, interested in working, they're, you know, minimal jobs. But somebody who's really invested in the pond and wants to make sure this weed doesn't come in and go and wants to work the boat ramp, that might be a way to do it. And that's what he said. The best boat ramps in the state are run by community people that have vested interest in the pond, which has not been the case. We, you know, we hire seasonal help that are usually young adults in there that are just there to collect the fees for the, for the parking. So if anybody has any suggestions, if, if there's anybody that can help out with that, if they want to contact our office and we can work together to see if that, that might help.
All right.
Leah?
Nope.
I was just going to say, we keep bringing up the state and that might be confusing some people that don't know. But like, my understanding is even though the parcel for the parking lot in the boat ramp is located within Freetown, it's actually owned by the Commonwealth.
Correct.
So it creates this really strange partnership of like, you know, Free Corso Little Lake is in Lakeville, like a quarter is in Freetown, and then the state controls the access in and out of it.
Yep.
Which I don't know how we got in that position, but that's a tough one.
In the 1990s, it was an agreement between the state and the town of Freetown that allowed us to maintain the ramp. Over the years, that agreement has remained, has stayed. Over the years, we have seen some improvements to the ramp. New shed, new striping, fencing, the piece talking about putting up the, a new ramp because the ramp's decaying, some of the pieces are kind of falling off, so.
They dug out that culvert again?
Correct. So there have been some positive changes to the pond, but we want to continue that, working with Lakeville and all the associations to keep that pond as healthy as possible.
One of the things is, a part of the agreement, we can only charge, the amount we charge has to only be to cover our operation fees, right? So one of the ideas we had was, we had so many people, it's like, well, there's obviously a lot of demand. Let's, you know, let's increase the price a little bit, maybe we reinvest back into it. But apparently that would violate the agreement, you know.
We have to get the fees approved by the state, Doug Cameron. And I think we're one of the highest fees already. It was difficult to get to $10 for parking from $5. It was really difficult to do that. So we can't go any higher than that.
Madam Chair, I'll just say very bluntly what Deb said very nicely. State's not paying for a boat ramp. I mean, a boat wash station.
Yeah.
They, they literally said, "Here, you could use these signs, you know, that showed pictures of boats driving away with like a weed on it." And they said, "Get volunteers and that'll..."
Super helpful.
Yeah, but we're not paying for a boat wash station.
They, they use the pond as a boat wash station, right? They go in the ocean and they, and they bring it there to wash it, what, just so that, you know, which really not what we're looking for.
I had an operations question. I know you're charging parking fees, but does everyone park there that uses it?
I know you're charging parking fees, but does everyone park there that uses it? Where people just drop off and can they use it? And how do you calculate how many people are in there then?
Luanne, you're probably best to answer that one.
Technically, the state said it's a launch fee, but it's very difficult. Someone comes in with this ski dude, dumps it and drives right past the staff. So they're not really tallying anyone that's there.
Because I've been on the pond and I can, I can tell you, I can see people like coming through. There's way more people than would fit in that parking lot.
And they park all up and down the streets there too, which is another-
Yeah.
To allude to what the chief said, you know, we had to put up a lot of no, no parking signs because they weren't parking everywhere. And the intersection of eighteen where it takes that hard turn before it gets to the ramp, they were parking inside of there. And then there was issues with people seeing coming out of, onto eighteen. And that was more towards the height of the pandemic. We were having a lot of issues with that. And then there was some signage put up. And I thought it was getting better, but you were saying it's still not perfect, right?
It, it goes hot and cold. It depends on how warm it is and how much people want to access the pond. So it's challenging.
I know the beach or on Freetown side, we had a situation where they were driving, using the beach itself to wash boats, driving around the beach. So we put up, you know, big concrete blocks to prevent that. And then people were picking up the jet speeds with their hands and croring them over the blocks and then putting them in the water. So they're gonna find a way in the water.
Where there's oil, there's a way. But I can honestly, oh, hold on. I can honestly say that over the last six, seven years, that these communities have come together with regards to, you know, trying to rectify the concerns that we've had with Long Pond and Asylums in Pond. And we've made some great strides, especially on the Nemasket River. And because it's all related and connected. So we have made some, you know, good concerns. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to continue to find ways to, you know, address these, you know, especially.
I will say that the whole time that I've been, you know, representing on the APC and the other group, that's one of the most important things is just making sure all the stakeholders. Freetown, I know, is well represented. Lakeville's always been well represented on both of those groups. But it really is not our purview to handle what the two chiefs handle. So I know the APC management, I know Nancy Yates has some authority over folks who walk around and do things, but that would be for her to report right to the chief, correct? Chief Perkins, Nancy Yates, if they have an issue, they're Rangers, they go right to you, don't they?
Correct.
Yeah. But as far as all the other stuff with the weeds and the this and the that, there really is pretty good representation. And that's, you know, one of the things that, you know, at least I've always tried to do is make sure, you know, we've been, I think we had all gone to that meeting together with Ari and I think our former town planner was there. So that, you're right, that whole part of pond maintenance and has, has gotten way better than it ever was.
True.
Yeah.
A question for Freetown, so I'm just looking at your GIS map here. Has there ever in the past been a discussion about the beach side? Where you've got a zoned open space and recreation, like putting a parking lot there to like say, okay, we're gonna take away the excuse if there's not enough room for a boat wash, by putting our own lot there and then freeing up the space on the state side? Has that ever come up in the past?
I don't think it has.
No? You're talking about right at the boat ramp, a little bit to the left of it?
Yep, yep.
So you would take the beach and make it a boat ramp?
No, 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 leave the ramp where it is. And then you would put a similar sized or maybe slightly smaller sized parking lot on the beach side. Maybe not all the way out to the beach, but like I said, I'm just shooting from the hip here, which is always very dangerous. Just looking at the graph and saying, oh, that looks like there's actually open space and recreation space right there across the way that is similar in size to the whole state parcel there. And maybe that's a way for you to generate some parking money because then you're no longer under the state's mandate.
Yeah.
I'm sure the people that park there for soccer and football could also substitute and add some money to the coffers as well if you ended up doing that. As a parent who was on that narrow road for years and years, trying to find a parking spot, driving around for ten, fifteen minutes, waiting for a parking spot to open. I know that that would be an area of opportunity. So not only just summertime, you could have possible revenue. I know I would have thrown like five bucks out the window instantly just to not drive around and worry about spots, so.
It's interesting because a lot of the talks we've had most recently are pushing that parking lot back. Because right now, if you look, it really makes no sense. We have a huge parking lot in a relatively small beach. It kind of should be the opposite, right? We need more space for people to be able to access on the beach. They're not there to park, they're there to use the beach theoretically. So we've talked about kind of pushing it back, that way they can have more activities. Would still have a good parking space, but that's, you know, an interesting thought. And it's worth something, it's worth-
So instead of pushing it back, couldn't you push it around the water more? And open up the area on the water more? Does that not work with the current landscape?
The water area, it kind of wraps around it, so to speak. We can't really push it out.
So they can't access it further down the line? Because I'm trying to picture it in my mind's eye and it goes into the woods, onto the left. When you're going down to the water. That's all swamp, got it? You're all thinking about it. I can see your minds are churning and-
Like, you don't know what you don't know, right? Like you just said earlier, that's a kind of a nice idea.
So you'll all be dreaming about it tonight. For your next meeting, you'll come up with options, but. All right, well, at this time, I'd like to invite the chiefs up to the table. Come on up.
We have spots, Ben, we need an extra chair.
We need just an extra chair, I think. And I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting, even though the microphones are here, so those that are, you know, will watch this after, will hear. But sometimes we have trouble in the audience, that sometimes they just can't hear. So if we can just, maybe just go up a little higher in our conversation. So now we're gonna talk a little bit about our public, joint public safety training for schools. So I know that this has been a topic of conversation, you know, for a while now. Not so much being reactive to a situation that, you know, we don't want to see here, but being more reactive, proactive in making sure that we're, you know, we have some things in place. So we'd love to hear a little bit more about, you know, how we can work to create more of a joint effort in our safety.
Sure, I think we already have a pretty good joint effort. We work well together, Freetown and Lakeville. Over the past few years, we've done annual trainings at the schools. We try to use a different school each time we go up there. Just so you know, Freetown and Lakeville, we, we're part of, we have mutual aid agreements. So if there's some type of an event that happens at the school campus in Lakeville, Freetown's gonna come over and help us. Part of that mutual aid agreement is called the Southeast Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council. So we're covered legally and we bring all our powers. If I were to go into Freetown and help them, they would bring all their powers into Lakeville and, and help us. We train together because it's a regional school. They're gonna be the first ones coming into Lakeville if some type of event happened in Lakeville. Over the past few years, we've done, we call it ASHER, it's Active Shooter Hostile Event Training. So it's Lakeville Police, Lakeville Fire, Freetown Police, Freetown Fire. We will do different exercises up there and we train off. We try to do it as the standardized training is coming about. Plymouth County just adopted the ASHER Response Plan, which is the Active Shooter Hostile Event Response Plan. So it would be a unified type of a response all across the county. I know between Freetown and Lakeville, we actually cross county lines. So they're Bristol County, we're Plymouth County. But that, that basic framework will be the same across any law enforcement and fire department coming into Lakeville to assist. Those type of events, we each have school resource officers. All the employees at the school are also trained in, in these type of events. That's, we use that, that's called ALICE. You can look that up, it's where it locked down inform, counter evacuate model. And you can look that up and that's the training that each, each school employee receives as well.
How often do you work on these types of exercises?
We've been doing it annually. We've, we've talked about it, it is a strain on the budget. It's, you know, it's funded through overtime. It's, you know, I think the state will probably come down with more mandates where it's gonna be mandated training, but it would be unfunded. Currently, we're doing it, we're doing it right now. It is, it is expensive. I know we, we had a conversation at, at one of our security meetings talking about trying to find grant money to get it done, just to, just to supplement the, the cost of it. Can be costly.
Roughly, I'm curious, how much?
It's, it's tough to, you know, hold down a number because, look, I think most chiefs know the importance of having active shooter training. And working within your budget is ideal. However, we roll with the punches. There's predictable overtime and there's unforeseen overtime. And when we can apply training when it's available and we have the funding, I, I think we do that. I think ideally, we'd like to have active shooter training every year. And I love to give guys sixteen hours overtime to be able to, you know, have that training. Is that supported in my budget? The answer is no. So we are very creative, maybe this year it's a four hour block of training. Maybe next year we are able to apply for a grant and we get a grant, we can apply that. This past year, we were able to apply for, our department applied for a grant and was able to commit to eight hours of active shooter training at our elementary school. Prior to that, we were able to do a joint task force training at the middle school and I believe it worked out very well, working side by side with brother officers and firefighters. It's definitely ideal to have that trained together. When that unfortunate incident happens, we have that experience to rely on to be able to react to the incident at hand. Chief Perkins and I have known each other quite a few years. We've grown up in the neighboring communities and from patrolmen to ranking officers and now chiefs of police. And having that commitment and brotherhood amongst ourselves, we definitely have that relationship of when the need arises for mutual aid, we're there to support one another. So going forward, of course, it's my recommendation to have ideally joint task force training. But look, everything is relied on the budget and making things happen.
Hours wise, how long does a training, ideally, how much hours in training would that equate to?
Ideally, last year we did eight hours. I would like to make this mandatory. So we don't make it mandatory, we're like, anybody who's available these two days. And we've kind of like, I can do Saturday, I can do Sunday. But then you have the people that we send out to be trained, to train the trainer type thing. Freetown has, I know you have, I have two or three people who do it, you have two or three people who do it. So they get together, they put in more hours. So they, you got five people putting in sixteen hours and then everyone else who shows up is putting in eight.
Got it, that's helpful context, thank you. Very, very helpful. I mean, it's hard to put a price tag on safety. You know, I know that we're trying to make sure that, you know, our students and staff are, you know, safe at the schools. And the, again, trying to come up with creative ways outside the box to make sure that that is funded. So if we knew that, you know, it was, I don't know, eight thousand, you know, a year, that we would have to make sure that we built in to the budget, you know, for this type of training and as a mandatory, I think that we just have to get creative and make it work.
I, you know, I'm, I'm the one that was guilty of putting this on the agenda.
So now you step up, Chair.
No, so, no, and I've spoke with the chief a lot about this, right? Where we are in a unique situation where we have two towns which can very much still benefit us, right? That we have two towns responding at the event if something happens. But we are also in the disadvantage of we have three different schools on that one parcel. So it was done at the middle school. And something I talked to the chief about was, it's not just the responding and the reacting, it's understanding the layout of each school, right? So I would, I would hope that we could find ways as both towns to come up with it in our budgets to support it and then rotate through schools. Because then we also have our own elementary schools, right? Where, you know, that year might be an off year where Lakeville does Lakeville, Freetown does Freetown. But we still have the intermediate school, we have the high school and we have the middle school. It's great that the middle school was done recently, but, you know, what's next? Maybe move on to the high school and then go to the intermediate school and, and try and build it into our budgets, right? Like the things we were talking about before, just figure out what the rough cost is behind it and then get that built into our budgets each year. So there's no surprise, like, you know, guys, I'd really like to try and get this on the budget this year. No, it's built in.
Yeah, I think we take it out of overtime, right? Have its own line out of it.
Correct.
I mean, that makes a lot of sense to me, I think.
And, and to their chief, I'm sorry, point is mandatory, right? For our officers and that's, that's something that, I'm not stepping on toes, that's on you. But, you know, for them to, to, you know, get the buy-in behind it from there, guys.
Here's some kudos as well in the background, right? Some people may not realize this, and the thing you said earlier about being reactive versus proactive. The great thing about our police forces, both Lakeville and Freetown, is this. They have the plan in place. They already created an active shooter plan and everything else, right? The Bible's there in a sense, right? All we had to do over the years was execute that and give them the resources they needed. From the best of view projects to having the security company come in, look at the cameras, leading this room, having the discussion itself is a proactive approach. And kudos goes to the chiefs, but also the officers, the teachers, the staff, everybody that puts their, their time and energy into it to make sure the children come home the same way they dropped them off, right? So I want to give you two of those kudos.
Absolutely.
Question if I may for the chiefs, is there any involvement or requirement from staff from the regional when you do this? Or is it just the police and then you've got certain people acting as certain roles?
So yeah, so the, when I spoke about ALICE before, that's the staff. So that's, that's, they're trained up on what they're supposed to do with the SRO in the event of this. So what we talked about, ASHER, is something that police and fire are gonna do separate of the staff. This is that, what their mission is to go in and get done. Two different things, two different trainings.
Is there a benefit of essentially then executing a tabletop exercise where you have both the departments and the staff there? Because I feel like things change very differently when you're in your training and then suddenly people in uniform are there and, you know, God forbid it's ever an actual real scenario where adrenaline's kicking up. Like, is, is there any benefit to doing a mass training with everybody involved?
Couple of years ago, when we had that joint task force training, a portion of that day was a tabletop exercise.
Okay.
So what does that mean? Identifying where the initial response was needed, where we set up a command post, where we were setting up staging, where we were setting up staging for ambulances to access the school and get the people out of that to get to the hospital. All those ideas were actually played out, just like we were playing strategy on a table. So this type of training is definitely embedded into the type of training that we are already doing. The active shooter training is not training that we can do on a computer and watch a PowerPoint. We physically have to be there, put on the gear, actively respond, going through the school, get the hydrant and pumping a little bit. Instead of, you know, we can't sit behind a computer screen and learn these type of tactics. We physically have to do these things. And the, the response that I'm getting from the officers and the community, the people that were involved with the training that we put on, has been nothing but a hundred and ten percent positivity. They, the civilians that were a part of this training, that we had volunteers and being like-
Role players.
Role players. They didn't have any idea that we had this equipment and what we do and being that victim in the middle of the hallway. And some people are walked upon because we, they're not treatable. But we find the people that are, we get them out of there and we get them to the hospital for treatment to make that safe. They didn't realize those type of things that we do for this type of training. So to add to that, we are doing that, we just need to, repetition is the key for the training. We can't do it once and wait four years and think we're gonna remember that. We have to have consistency, we have to keep doing this type of training.
I mean, my thought is like, it would be fantastic if the towns can figure out a way to do like, all right, let's alternate an elementary school each year and then do one of the campus schools every year. Like, you guys figure it out. Like, you guys figure it out, but like, just how do you keep it fresh? Somebody here said-
That's, yeah, that's what we've been doing is we try to do a new school each year. And then to your point, every, every officer that comes on with the Lakeville Police Department has to do a walkthrough and be familiar with every school. So that's something to do with the SRO. And they actually have a form that they sign off that they did a walkthrough of each school so they're familiar with the layout. So even if someone, we hire an officer from, you know, who has experience in another town, didn't go to school here, they are familiar with it. They know where the cafeteria is, they know where the library is of each school. Very important, so.
Thank you, sir.
So over the past two years, our department had quite a bit of changeover where we had a number of ranking officers retired and we had these replacements. I became chief, a new lieutenant, a number of sergeants. We had many officers that never even stepped foot in an elementary school. And I made it imperative that the guys need to get in there and see what they potentially could be walking through. Just like Chief Perkins mentioned, that we have all our officers walk through there to get an idea that, they didn't even know that there was a basement in the second floor of that school. Isn't that crazy? They, they can't have that. So when we need to respond, they know that there's a, there's a basement to that building.
I hate that you guys have to do it, but I'm really appreciative that you guys do it and you do it, you know, you practicing all the time and getting ready.
Thank you.
Which now bridges into the SRO at the schools. Now, do we have a, a resource officer in all schools? Or do we have one for the campus? I don't, I'm a little disconnected from that piece.
In, in Lakeville, we have one school resource officer responsible for four schools.
Okay.
So that's the three schools up on the Holland Road campus and then the Aswarps' School on Main Street. If there's like an emergency or something on Main Street and the SRO's at the high school, then it's, one of the officers can do it. We do have the day shift patrol, we do the crossing every day. So they're visible at the school and they also do a property check or walkthrough. And there's a couple of officers that do it and will actually go and engage with the kids and stuff. So we're, we're always a familiar face inside the Aswarps' School, which kind of leaves the SRO to handle the three schools up on the Holland Road campus.
And this year, our department was able to establish a part-time SRO in our one and only elementary school in our community. I was able to absorb that into my budget, where I'm able to have him there on a part-time basis. The jury's still out. I'm getting some feedback from the community that they'd like to see a full-time staff SRO in the school. But like anything, everything is, there's the cost that comes with that. And by taking that individual out of my patrol line, it takes away from patrol. And that can impact the number of officers on a daily patrol or even, you know, a cost of overtime depending on other officers leaving. So there's a balancing act here with, when I'm currently dealing with the SRO. I like to think in the future that our community could support a full-time SRO going forward in the future with, with Lakeville. Anytime that the Lakeville chief feels it's necessary or think it would be beneficial for our SRO to support their SRO, all it takes is picking up the phone and making a phone call. We'd be happy to do that. But we just understand our, our roles and responsibilities. I'm committed to, to Freetown and obviously he's committed to, to Lakeville. But again, we'll support each other, whatever is needed for that program.
And I could certainly appreciate that across the board.
I guess one of the, one of the questions that has arisen is, does it make sense to have another SRO at the campus in Lakeville? And a portion of the SRO is paid for by the school district? I don't know, is it 50%?
75% of a step one patrolman.
So I don't know, that's a topic for the towns to discuss because of course, there's monetary issues with that. But there's three schools for one SRO and it's the older kids, right?
And then, for our SRO, the district doesn't pay for any of the-
No.
That's correct. It's taken directly out of our budget.
It's full, full-time?
Yeah, so, so it would be a full-time police officer position.
Which, does anyone know off the top of their head?
So, so they pay 65% of a step one patrolman, call it 60,000.
Okay, thank you.
So it's 65, not 75?
75% of that.
Okay.
It's paid by the district.
It's paid by the district.
And then we pay the 25 left.
Yeah, correct. Well, we pay, we pay, the, the, our SRO has a bachelor's degree, you know, is, you know, step five, so.
Okay. And then that SRO rejoins patrol in the summer when there's nothing going on in school, right?
Correct. She, so we, we're part of, we do the DAB camp in the summer and, and stuff like that.
Okay. Anything else on that subject?
Like, one question for Chief Perkins, I guess, would be, or maybe this is better for budget talks later. Like, Chief Rose mentioned, there's just requests in the community of like, hey, could we do a full-time? If you had any requests from our community on whether the one SRO for four locations is working well or would you pump it up if you thought we had the-
You're, you're asking, you know, you're asking me, you know, every time something happens and it's in the news.
Yeah.
People say, what would it take to put an officer in each school? And I'm like, it's a lot of money. You know, the one good thing about the Holland Road campus is our SRO goes to every school every day. And it's, it's right, you know, they're right next to each other. So it's a big area, but it can be covered by the SRO. And the SRO office is in the high school.
Okay.
But they do, she does travel to each school.
Right, thanks.
And she's very visible.
Yes, yes, she's-
I have a daughter in the school system and she always sees her and, you know.
Yeah, visibility is important.
Yeah.
And that's why it's like, we'll have the patrols stop in at the Aswarps' during the day.
Another way to look at it as well, over the last couple of years, both police departments, SRO, the district, we're also looking at all the video cameras and the systems we have in place to see what's, what's still up to date, what needs to be updated, what needs to be replaced. So a passive security along with SROs and a police presence, it's, it's a good encompassing deterrent for any, any would-be adversary, right? Especially with the vestibule projects and everything else. So there's work being, happening in the background that most folks aren't aware of. And that's kind of what you want in the security system. You don't need to see all the bells and whistles or what's out there. That's, element of surprise is, is good, right? But working with these individuals has been a, a bright spot in the past few years. And we're gonna continue doing so, improving our schools one thing at a time.
Okay, do you guys have a few more minutes?
Yes.
Well, you have police escort back to Freetown.
I was like, is it in the budget?
So any other discussion topics that impact both towns? So with regards to, you know, our regional district, anytime that, you know, there's discussion outside the, the agreement, it would have to be, and I'm just gonna throw this out there. So I know that we've been approached probably individually and collectively for a recall petition for our elected officials at the regional, you know, school district. Have you had the similar?
We, I believe we all, we'll probably say yes to that as well. We've all heard the same thing. There's residents that would like a recall provision within that district agreement.
Right.
So we've also heard the same calls.
Okay, so we, we actually passed that in Lakeville. So we have a recall provision on the books for, you know, for our elected officials. Does, does Freetown have one?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay. So I know that our town administrator reached out to council to see how would that work? Because it's not necessarily part of the agreement. It would have to be an act of the legislature. So anytime something happens at the district, it has to be a, a similar vote or a mutual vote from Freetown in Lakeville. So as we're getting ready to enter into our, you know, our town meeting, so to speak, is this something that we would look to have language put around? That we would petition our legislatures that would go through town meeting?
Oh, is that an open question?
It's all, it's an open question, yeah.
I mean, I've, I've been appro, well, our folks in Lakeville, well, a lot of them that I spoke to, were disappointed that our local recall didn't apply to school committee members. So I feel like that's still something that people want to see. So, you know, so I, I think because of the complexity of it, it's not just doing a simple petition to get it done. I think that we should take it upon ourselves to do it if that's what people want in both communities. I mean, if it was only Lakeville and not in Freetown, then it can't be done. Or only in Freetown, not in Lakeville. But if it's gonna be done-
It's like one should trigger the other.
We don't have one.
We don't?
I've, I've talked to, I've talked to our lawyers, there's, there's nothing in Freetown.
No recall petition at all?
No, so I would like to see it if there is, but I was on the phone with-
All right, I got-
There's no school committee recall provision in either town because that has to be a joint.
Right, and that's where I was going. I mean, I just, I'm, I'm hitting this one head-on, so. Because I think it's, we're here, we might as well have the discussion. So we both utilize town council, the same town council, I believe, right? So would it be worth our town administrators coming together to work with town council to draft language for town meeting?
My, my understanding of the legal opinion we got was it's two methods, maybe thirty. One has to be a majority vote by the school committee to amend the agreement, which would not involve the towns. Two would be if the two towns individually did like we did for our normal recall provision, pass a, a town meeting warrant article asking for special legislation. And then the third, which I don't understand, says either town can motion for amendment by more than half of their voters passing about, which the language of that one seems like-
I think that just means someone could start it and then someone could do it later.
Go to the school.
Yeah, 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 something like that.
But I think it's probably a discussion with the school committee and we see where that goes. And then if, but they're not amenable to it.
But is it, is it part of the agreement? Or is, I don't think so. I mean, that was my interpretation, that it wasn't part of the regional agreement. But it was-
General legislation.
General legislation.
Maybe.
And the, the way I'm looking at it is, I have had Lakeville residents approach me and say, okay, so if you're asking us not to do it this way that we think, but you're telling us that you represent us and you'll do it, then I think we need to do, and I know we've all been, not, maybe not all, but I know several, a couple of us have definitely been approached. And I think it's just up to us now to do. And if that means, whatever the scenario was that we got recently, where we go to town meeting, each town has to vote to allow their select board to petition for the special legislation. Then I think that's what-
But the wording has to be-
Exactly.
Same, the same part.
Right.
That, everything has to be the same.
I definitely think this would be something that the two town administrators would need to work very closely and carefully.
Maybe we'll, we'll get, you know, a cheaper legal, our council will be cheaper because it's just one document.
Optimistic theme there.
Because the problem we ended up facing was, as we warned people, the language that got passed ended up getting kicked back and being non-constitutional. So then the House and Senate, their lawyers said, well, all these changes have to happen to even make this workable.
Right.
And then they still came back to us and said, we really think you need to clarify a few things. So if we do this, it can't just be the two towns. And we've gotta get our state reps involved too and say, look at this before we even bring this to floor.
Well, that's, that's a good consideration.
It's aggressive, but, you know, I, I hate to say it's aggressive because town meeting isn't until June, but it's a big undertaking. So I, I think that, I've heard from enough folks that I feel like I have to stay on this for people, so.
What is Freetown's town meeting?
Sorry?
It's the same day.
Yeah. We can't be unique though in this situation, right? This has to exist.
It does exist.
In like one place.
It just goes to another question of hygiene and good housekeeping. You don't have sitting people that can't be removed. Like, that's, that, that should never be an issue anywhere.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be in a town, it shouldn't be for any portion in government. You shouldn't have to wait three-plus years in order to remove someone if they need to be removed. But there needs to be a good threshold, there needs to be reasoning and logic behind it and it needs to be able to be passed. And it needs to go through all the steps. But it is just good hygiene and it, it's just a step that I'm quite shocked the state hasn't just blanketly stated in general because I really thought that was coming years ago at this point. What they had talked about it, I don't know, five, six years ago, that they were just gonna put it across as a, as an MGL for recall provision, but.
Because even ours, our normal one took a year, year and a half before it was effective?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, contrary to Maureen, I don't believe in a recall. But people have asked, so I have promised to work on it. So I believe, I know, we differ, we've differed on that for a long time, Maureen. But that's, that probably explains why it hasn't come from the state yet because there's probably-
If a president can be impeached or removed, I should be able to be.
You're special.
Would you say that we have consensus to direct the town administrators to?
Do we need a vote?
We can.
We can always clarify with the general vote, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we don't really have a vote on that.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, it's just discussions.
We can vote at our next meeting at, oh.
I mean, not our next.
Not our next meeting, because that's gonna be half an hour, but the meeting after that.
No, but this topic's a little bit vague.
So we could, we can-
I, I think the consensus is definitely there that, you know.
Okay.
We'll have our people call your- Okay.
Sounds great. And by that, we mean Andrew and Deb calling each other.
Okay, I know you have to head out, so.
Let's do this more often.
We'll schedule another one.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll bring cookies or something, but. All right, so I guess if we don't have any other business, I'll entertain a motion from the Lakeville Select Board to adjourn at 6:40.
So moved.
Second.
Roll please.
Fabian, aye.
John, you aye.
Carbone, aye.
Andy, aye.